Kim, you up first?
Yes, sir. Do y'all want to just go line by line on the general fund revenue or give me a direction?
I kind of want to see at least the bar drive, which is some of the kind of small one.
Well, just...
$150.
Yeah, looking at the avalorm tax, it's up 9 percent. Notice that B and S at 5.7. And then ours...
Can y'all hear me? I can hear you fine, I'm not sure.
For sales, sales tax, sales tax is increased, the budget is increased by 5 percent. And just knowing that the sales tax and avalorm tax is going to be your, what I call your line share of general fund revenue, where your other revenues that we can go line by line, those are going to be, you know, that's going to cover miscellaneous, what I call those are like miscellaneous revenues. It's going to be your business license, it's going to be a large one with your sales tax and your avalorm, but the others are going to be, just covering your cost. One item I can, you know, be able to point out, there's middle way down, it's called Alabama Trust Fund Receipts. And what that is, that comes from the state and that's for capital improvements. And the law states that that's to be in a separate account and it's restricted money. So, and right now in the cash account, there's over $700,000 sitting in a separate line, a separate cash account for capital improvements, but it's being recognized in this general fund budget as $135,000. And that's, you know, that's about right, but I would recommend in the future is to move that to a separate, out of general fund into a separate fund, that you can be able to look at your actual capital improvements and you have your cash there and that's easier to manage.
You said that's restricted to capital improvements?
Yes, it's capital improvements. Have you got any others on the list that you're inquired about?
So, I guess not very explicit on that. I'm just looking at the projections, if I'm reading this correctly, and I know it's, you know, it's just your best educated guess is where it's going, I just want to make sure we're being conservative enough with our projections because if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like we projected 5.4 million in, you know, say taxes in 2019, we came at 5.23, so that's about 170 short. And sales tax, we projected 9.21 million, we came up with 8.89, which is a little over 320,000 short, am I reading that?
I know, but those are budgets, you can still compare year to year.
Correct.
And that's what we're basing it on. But on the real estate, that we already know what that income's going to be, but what Kim pointed out was that we should take out 3 percent and we didn't do that last year, but we're given the amount that we're going to be collecting that year, we don't make that number up, so.
But if it comes up short of what is projected?
Right, so this budget has 3 percent deducted from it already.
So, we get that abstract from Teddy Faust's office and so, so it has the number. And historically, from the past experience I have, we always in our budget reduce by 3 percent for errors.
We didn't do that in advance, so.
And so, that's what the, this number that's budgeted is representing the abstract less, you know, 3 percent or 97 percent of the abstract. So, it should come close to it. And we looked at last year's abstract and looked if there had been a reduction for error, it would've came in right where the number is. So, we just over budgeted last year.
Hey, that was my question, just when you're balancing the budget, if it's, you know, if what it's based on the projections that are, you know, quite provision, a small swing of 3 percent would be a big number?
I'm going to get Kim to explain to you that we actually exceeded the goal and she'll explain to you why it shows a deficit because of the government way of doing the accounting, but we actually exceeded the 2019 goal.
So, Jimmy, on that, just to, let me ask a number, a quick, the projected actuals, which will be very accurate because it may have just one month of actuals, is an increase of 7 percent over 2018 actuals. So, the projected actual over...
2018 to 2019.
2018 to 2019 actuals is a 7 percent increase, but this proposed budget is over the actuals is predicting a 9 percent increase. And that's the number that, you know, you have to be careful with. If you stay level at 7 percent, I mean, when we had 7 percent last year, couldn't sustain that, but to say we're going to go from 7 percent to 9 percent, that's your question. That 2 percent alone, they start adding up.
Well, we do it on a multi-year trend, so, you know, some of, they're not going to be all correct and I can tell you the past budgets were never close, as close as they are today because they just weren't reflected in your budget package. But all of these, overall, we met goal and based on what she'll explain to you for these funds that transfer, she'll explain that.
But to be able to maybe help clarify, you know, every year the revenue commissioner gives what they already, you know, because you're, you're in avalorm being the year in the past, so they give you the report, the budget based on their numbers and my recommendation when we got that report was to reduce it and only budget 97 percent of their actual numbers and that should get us really close to the actual collections. Yeah, just to budget the 97, and that's just for any errors that, from the revenue commissioner's side, if they've got a property that was classified incorrectly, you're not over budgeting, you're being more conservative. And then the sales tax, you know, it looks really, I mean, I thought this number, I'm being 5 percent, was really good. Just to be able to let you know how we came up with these numbers, Jill went through these and I went through them, we started out with revenue numbers and, you know, looking at conservative where our revenue numbers are going to be, then expenses, you know, then it was each department doing the expenses, so it wasn't that we're trying to do expenses and then go back and do revenues, revenues were done first. Does that help answer?
It does. Where's the half, half of the sales tax in the budget that's supposed to be going to debt reduction as well as a rainy day fund?
Okay, so, in this budget, there's, there's none going to, the rainy day fund was already set up years ago, it was $7 million.
Right.
So, that was set up. And then in this last year's budget, the money was, and that resolution was to cap at 1.4 went, I believe that was the number, at 1.4 over to capital improvements fund and that was for projects. And then the, there was a dollar amount was put in for debt reduction. The debt reduction was paid off and there is money left in that bank account, so, or line item. After the general fund debt was paid off, they're still sitting in that account for debt reduction, $695,000 is still sitting in that account, but we paid off the general fund note that had been planned in the, you know, it was planned for y'all to pay off that debt. So, and what's actually going to, you'll be able to show on the financials when you look, it looks like we're going to be under this year, but when you recognize revenue in the past year, so let's say three years ago, we recognized sales tax, we put that money into a separate bank account, the next year we recognize it, we set it aside, we set it aside, then June of this year, the notes were callable, so we paid it off. So, you're going to go into, you're going into fund balance, you're taking money out of fund balance to pay that, to pay that debt off. So, that's where you'll see in the financials in this coming year that you had over a million dollars that you didn't budget for as hitting current year's revenues, it was past year's revenues.
So, it ends up as a deficit?
Ends up as a deficit. Now, in this budget, there's no, there's no sales tax to be able to move into the capital improvements, based on the capital improvements that are in the budget, in the capital improvements fund, the cash balance is there, because there's been cash being put in every year, you know, and as projects are being paid out of it, but based on the cash balance and the projects that are in there, there's enough money to pay, to finish those projects. And then...
Go ahead.
And there's, and there's money sitting in the debt service cash account that you already paid off, so you may want to decide as a council to take that money and move that over to the capital improvements.
By doing that, it will show an additional deficit?
Yes, incorrect.
It's crazy.
So...
This is just part of municipal accounting, I don't like it.
So, bigger picture, I guess going out a few years, number one, I know we've got obviously a lot of infrastructure expenses that we're trying to address, how to pay those out of utility.
Oh, this is city?
I'm talking, bigger picture for just a minute. So, we have utility, infrastructure improvements, we've got land that we may acquire, park land that we would need to figure out where to find, and we've got 7 million in the rainy day fund, which we could, we could just tap into and replenish, but is 7 million enough right now or do you think in the next couple of years we can move that number up higher or more in the rainy day fund or like 10 million or?
It's, it's going to be on like a calculation, if you want to look at your operating expenses and do a percentage of, that you want to make sure your reserve, you want to make sure your reserve is there, that'd be the council decision, how much do they want to put in that reserve? And that's going to be, that's going to be important, you, you know, I would never say to take that 7 million dollars and reduce it because, you know, having your reserves there makes you stronger as a city, you got to worry about, you know, you have storms come up, you need to be able to pay, you know, it's, it's going to be when that next storm comes, you got to have FEMA in here and contractors in here and so you want to make sure you have that reserved at once.
Let me give you some history on that too, Kim, so that 7 million's been set for more than seven years, I know, and that number hasn't increased and our monthly operating expenses has increased and we've talked about it numerous times, raising that threshold and, you know, I think we should raise it, it should go up, you know.
I want to do this episode.
And I think what Jill was talking about is taking money out, he was basically just talking about borrowing from yourself and then paying it back and we've done that once or twice and we always were able to pay it back. And this goes all the way back to Robert's original question, is not that long ago, we had a half a penny going to additional debt reduction, not debt reduction, additional debt reduction, and that amounted to about $2 million a year. And, you know, if we kept that ordinance intact and didn't put something in our budget ordinance that allows us to use it for the general fund, we would still have, we'd have about a fourth of, about a fourth of 9.3 million.
And you would be using that money from utilities?
Well, that's, that's an entirely different story altogether, I think, and we can get into that a little bit, but I, you know, that was too many, we, we paid the debt down, the money was there, we paid it down and now it seems to be going into the general budget and I think if I hear you right, Robert, that's your concern.
That's the concern. We need to raise the rainy day fund.
Well, what I recommended, you know, last budget was that we do have a rainy fund for the city, but we don't have one for utilities, we do need those funds right now for infrastructure, but we've never had a rainy day fund for the city and that is half the budget. So, I think if we concentrate on putting funds away, we should start with utilities.
But we have a fair amount of reserves in utilities, you know.
But that's not a rainy day fund, those are not even going to cover, there's going to be a period where we're going to lean a lot of credit to do the five-year plan.
I brought my budget from last year, I remember with Mike, that's about the one thing he did, he presented with the excess, if you took the over four months coverage of operating. I mean, last year in gas, we had 5.7 million, electric fund 2.5, this is not reserve, this is excess over four months operating at 3.3, you know, that was...
Those are all of our accounts, I mean, these are the accounts where we will be paying for infrastructure.
And that's, that's utilities, that's not general, you know, we had close to 20 million last year unrestricted funds in the general fund. I think I'm looking at, in my mind, I'm thinking big picture, if I want to go to, say, $10 million ultimately in the rainy day fund, but we also have critical needs or other expenses that we're looking to make, does it make sense to borrow the money while we're saving up to that 10 million mark or do you tap into that money and then save up to 10 million mark? Do you borrow while you're saving or do you spend cash and then set it back aside?
My philosophy is spend cash, pay yourself back, you're always saving money, but...
And if you do that, you just have to have, I think, a lot of credit or something in place that you got protection.
Which was always our, which was always our backup plan, you know, tap into the unique down.
I feel like things are slowing down and I just would not do things like this right now until we have a better grasp of what the economy's going to do and I'm not trying to jinx anything, but things are slowing down.
Well, to that point, then why are we budgeting the sales tax of the same as this past year, it's 5.2 this year and budgeting an increase of 5 percent?
It's based on the trend for, it went back, I mean, how many years, four, five? It's mainly like house sales right now, because that's what would slow down the fir-, you know, first.
You're the sales tax, not real estate tax right now.
That's what I see, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of thinking right now real estate.
Yeah, because the real estate's a little more predictable.
Right.
So, sales tax is projected at 4.15, and last year it was, it increased to, looks like about 440,000.
4.6 percent from 17 to 18, Jim, and then from 18 to 19, 5.2. So, the 5 percent, yeah, is on that curve, but if you really think that the economy's going to slow down, you don't, you don't keep extrapolating, you know.
At least now you're being conservative.
There's lots of other, there's lots of other sales that are very conservative, so, I mean, you just have to go through the whole thing and you'll see what we're, it's definitely, I think, a very conservative budget.
Hold on, do you want to get into another revenue or?
Just looking at, I lost my time on the cigarette tax, function equals spread, 127 to 79 one year.
It's just a declining, it is a declining revenue. And then the vape, that's, that you see a lot of, the vape is not cigarette tax, so that's a sales tax, that's not in the, in the law, so it has a cigarette tax, so that's where you're going to see a reduction.
That's a logic, we did, we look back to more conservative number, we're, we're at 8.43, we're going back to 500.
Well, more with the total, if you step back and take into the total revenues. Your, your increase from total revenue increase from 2017 to 2018 is .02 percent, or .0002. Your 2018 to 2019 actuals, you're negative .07 percent.
I'm just going on logic.
Talking on all, total revenues. And then for this year, we're predicting a 6.6 percent increase. Page three, Mayor, under general, straight up under, all the way to the bottom line, total revenues, 25, 975, 254.
On seven of these too, there's a breakdown, the breakdown is in two different pictures now, but...
Well, I would think that same line is apples to apples.
I think there are two lines, so, I mean, I'm not looking at the...
Sure. Yeah, you got it right there, there is a little something missing from the total. I was looking at the line, it's 25, 975.
Right, so, in the unit, you're going to see all general fund revenue, on page three, you're only seeing general administrative revenue because each one of the departments has a breakdown of revenue. It all adds up on the first page, but page three is just a snapshot of what's occurring in general. So, for example, the sanitation collection is over there in the sanitation department.
But regardless, all those lines across 17 actual, 18 actual, those are all apples to apples, right?
Yes.
On page three?
Yes.
Regardless of whether they're complete view of general government revenue, it's a complete view of revenues compared across the line.
There's a few of them that are broken down, those two things.
Right, those are the police jurisdiction and the cigarette tax and the wine tax, those throughout the year, we started breaking that out, so you have to add those two together and compare it to your one number from last year.
I guess while we're looking at the total revenue, just above that, two lines, it says utility transfer for ECD.
Yes, that is the amount for the K-1 center from last year and then the...
The only transfers from utilities, well, except for 500 last year, is, are for community development and everything that's being proposed for a transfer of this budget is for community development. And that's why your, your sheets here, it doesn't reflect any of that.
But that, that number, that must have been when we first started, that 739 is actually supposed to be this 513 from the front page. I need to make that change in Excel, this Ryan Munus.
I think Richard Peterson can speak more to the pilot proposal, but across the country for municipalities who own their utilities, the pilot or franchise fee is taken off of the gross sales and because we have so many infrastructure upgrades still to do in utilities, the pilot fee that I'm proposing is off of net profit. So, there's a significant amount that some cities do get from this, but it's, right now, we're just trying to budget it so they, they have all the money they need to do the work that's needed in each utility.
And that's separate from...
No, that, that would be the same, that's what we're going to call it, that's what we're going to call it now for community development. Last year it was the purchase of K-1, you know, but we didn't have, we hadn't called it anything yet and there hasn't been an established percentage yet.
So, in each utility, they're paying a pilot.
Equals 8, 8 percent of the net profit. And, you know, honestly, in the future, when the utility upgrades are done, I mean, there's a lot of opportunity for community development, I just think we need to keep it very low right now.
Kim, I have a question about a, some revenues, page two, revenue three quarters the way down, the admin services for utilities, 2.555 million?
It's in every budget, it's for the percentage of salaries that are used for administrative for utilities.
Now, is this after we've, we've transferred charges from general government to utilities?
This is a charge that was in addition to all of the other fees that have always been paid, but this is just the administrative cost that the utilities share, in other words, if they were completely separated, they'd have to have these employees for themselves.
The revenue department salaries, pay all taxes, retire, that, you know, all the administrative, HR, myself, you know.
But I disagree, because that's not...
It's always been there.
It is always been there.
It's always been, transfers from utilities too, that wasn't included, that wasn't part of the transfer.
No, it wasn't part of the...
Nope.
It's always been a separate line item.
The figures that I gave y'all in the past did not include these.
And it does include, you know, any of the new, new hires that have been put out, so that's why I didn't raise.
New hires that would be administrative help.
Right.
I don't disagree with the line item and all of that, the community struggle, it just still seems like a transfer from utilities to general fund in the amount of 150,000.
Well, it's just paying back their share of what, and if we could set up all this in payroll where it just hit all these different ones, it would be, we wouldn't have to worry about it, but...
Do we hire a new IT person, I mean, the work that everybody does for utilities, the utility's going to pay that share.
What I'm saying, that, that, we're saying that we're, the government's self-reliant and I think that a lot of this was just paid out of general government.
No, it wasn't.
In the past, they were just receiving salaries from the general government and then you would transfer money from utilities to general government.
I'm telling you, it was not.
This, yeah, this line item has always been about that, it's just utilities paying their share of all the salaries.
Like, like we say always, like 10 years?
Yeah, as long as I've been here.
That's why the numbers I've been using have nothing to do with that fee and if there's a different consideration in the future, then, you know, we definitely do it, but there are still some things that utilities are not charged, you know, it's just, if Munus, if we can get a lot more detail, you know, that would be better, but hiring those employees strictly for utilities would be more expensive right now.
At the, at the county, we did the same thing for solid waste because they were their enterprise fund and so we had admin, payroll, HR, so I had a calculation that I went through, the same thing Jill's got a calculation that she goes through to be able to allocate what's general government's, you know, cost because, you know, would you have, if you didn't have utilities, you may not have all these people as, as our employees. So, that's just a way of being able to allocate the cost back down to the facilities.
Matt, I think what Robert was saying was if it was 1.5, 2.15, it's 2.5 now, you can, if you move the numbers up, if you drop that 2.5 instead of 1.5, then you would just increase the transfer from utility by a million dollars, it's, yeah, sort of, whether you call it a part of the avenue or a utility transfer, I mean, I understand.
I wouldn't call it a city transfer though, I mean, unless there's a way to do it so they're just paying for their payroll, that's the only way I would change it, because it's not, it's not a transfer, they're, they're reimbursing the city for their share of those salaries.
I think that's why I've always felt like, we really look at the big picture, we gotta combine anyways because it's sort of.
Please don't ever go there. Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, it, it was up to six million dollars a year. We can never do that again. It would be, we would go back to exactly where we were before, and it just took way too long to get to this point.
And you wanna be able to look to see how electric is doing on their own. And, I mean, Jack, you've been to many meetings in Standard, you know, doing ratings, ratings wants to see it also, to see how general government's doing and utilities are doing on their own. So, definitely, if you have anything you can direct, that's directly related in those utilities, you wanna keep those in those utilities. And these admin fees here, that's just, you know, the cost of the mayor that's overseeing all of it, being able to allocate, you know, finance. You've got a HR person, two HR people that are serving all the employees, so being able to try to allocate those down to that level as much as you can. Sometimes it is, you can't get exact science on it or exact calculation, but it's just the best allocation that you can come up with.
Yeah, and basically, it still doesn't change that it was up to six million dollars a year. And if you go further back, it would be more. Cause it's kept increasing the further you go back. That is no longer happening.
Anything else on the revenue? Yeah, I mean, I'm still not comfortable with that, that total revenue projection, like you pointed out, and seeing that it's being supplemented by the, the sales tax. It hasn't always been supplemented by sales tax.
When you're trying to make the city self-sufficient, it needs to keep all of its revenue. I mean, if you put money aside, you're gonna have to have utility profits. It's just a whole changing of the way.
But I'm not, I'm not in favor of taking over two million dollars worth of sales tax revenue and just apply it in general government.
But general government is paying for everything for the city.
Understand that.
Whether or not you put it aside or not.
If you look at this, at this budget, at each department, taking utilities out, revenues are neutral, maybe up, maybe down a little bit, and expenses on each department is up twenty to forty percent.
Then it wouldn't budget, so I don't know what you're talking about. This is, we're not using any transfers from utilities. Not, they're not paying for our operating, our government operating, and they're not doing a transfer from the city, except for community development.
Yeah, and some administrative.
The administrative has always been an expense for, as long as she's been here, and, and it goes back from there. I've asked Xavier, too. This has always been an expense. I'm telling you what we've changed. This term equals almost six million dollars. I showed y'all, too, what the city and the utilities would look like had we continued to report this way, if you wanna pass that around. The utilities wouldn't have profit, or barely any profit, and the city would show a fake, you know, surplus of a lot of money. I mean, that's, that's what, that's exactly what they would look like if we never made the changes that we made.
One of the things, Robert, if you wanna go to that, where it was, or that way, maybe going, if I may just jump off into expenditures for just a moment, on page three. If you look at salaries under administrative, and look at what's budgeted versus what's proposed, what was, last year was the revised budget versus what's proposed. It's a twenty-seven point two percent increase year over year. And then the proposed budget over actuals is a four hundred eighty-nine thousand dollar increase at one line item. And I think if you look for where the two million went over the, over time, and, and the problem is, is not just two million, that you spend one year, you get back the next year. Problem is that it's just two million, the gift that keeps giving, I think. And it's things like that, that's four hundred eighty-nine thousand, that, that's each and two, there's twenty-five percent of it right there. And, and I'm sure that there's no other examples of that, but that's, if you look at that over twenty-eighteen actuals, it's now close to six hundred thousand. So, now you're getting close to a third of it.
I think that's why I keep going back to, you have to drill down to know how these departments do, but then you also have to step back to see the big picture. Cause this could mean the functional reallocating somebody who's already part of the city payroll, reallocating it to.
Could be.
To the general city government.
That's true. In other words, that may have gone down somewhere else, but.
Not what's happening. I mean, I think that, and I even said this, would y'all rather have this presented exactly the way it was before? And I didn't hear back from anybody.
I like the way it's presented.
I'm just saying, but this is about as transparent as it can get, and these are actual figures. I mean, we're not, and honestly, I take great offense to this. Anytime there's any insinuation that we're doing things in a nefarious way.
Nobody, nobody said that.
That wasn't meant that way at all.
But that's how I take it when you say, well, it's all the same. I mean, it's all the same money, and this, this is, we're taking this admin fee. That really is a, a transfer from the utilities. It is not.
Then let me back up. Then what you're saying is, you're increasing salaries in, in general government from one point three, six million to one point five million, but you haven't reallocated people, you're just having a five hundred thousand dollar increase, which is a.
We are hiring, we're hiring people, and there's, I can't remember if it's the normal three percent increase for merit.
Three percent.
I mean, I need to show y'all, too, the full-time Excel spreadsheet that shows, and that's also in what I just, I think I made all this. It's hard to read because it's small, so it's this one right here in the packet that I gave you. This has all the full-time employees. And it breaks it down from two thousand twelve, well, last term, it has last term one here, the difference in full-time employees, and then it has two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, and I broke out nineteen by itself because that was really the year that we started adding employees. When you look at the growth, which the population's on top, I mean, we have not added very many full-time employees based on the huge deficit that was created where we didn't hire anybody for a long time. It's, it's just the reality.
I kinda thought we'd been making that up, you know, over time, and then I see just this year alone, a twenty-seven point two percent increase just in that one, just in, just in that one administrative salary.
Well, the administrators, this has a full-time administrator in the budget. Because there's been a full-time administrator with the city of Fairhope since two thousand one. And with the, the most growth happening right now, I mean, y'all, y'all were part of that, it was last term's council, y'all defunded.
We defunded what was not known as administrative, we didn't have a city administrator.
It, it wasn't called a city administrator, but it was a full-time administrative assistant.
It was a general superintendent, and, and we didn't want the vacuum to be filled right, right before the mayor left office with someone that, that.
All of those are full-time administrative roles.
Well, it, there's still an increase in four hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars, even if you have an administrator in there, I don't think that that's adding four hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars.
No, the administrative is not that much.
It's not sustainable. That, that's where your two million is going, things like that.
Well, to kinda take everybody back three years, when we calculated covering the salary of a utility superintendent that we weren't gonna be paying the mayor any longer, we discussed the fact that we were going to lose that city superintendent and use that salary.
What's utilities?
Yeah, no, but that's not how it was pitched, and that's not how it was discussed in the meetings.
Superintendent utilities is the additional salary for utilities.
I understand, but.
We've had a full-time city administrative position since two thousand one.
Correct.
We, we have not had one, it was defunded right when I took office.
Let me finish. And, and we knew that, and when you pitched these new positions that we created back then, go back and watch.
I absolutely did not.
It's, it's documented in the meetings, that salary was going to be absorbed into a utility superintendent.
That's absolutely not true, because nobody that I've hired is a full-time city administrator or had that administrative role. You're confusing superintendent of utilities with a city administrative role. It's been called many things in the past, but they're all been full-time city administrative roles. Defunding that position, I mean, I was, we were elected in August, the position was defunded in November. I mean, it makes no sense whatsoever. I mean, it was just a blatant hole in what I feel like was taking away from the office of the mayor to be able to fulfill my role. And I've never communicated anything otherwise. All I ever said was, I'm not gonna take an additional salary for the superintendent of utilities when the utility department needs a professional person in there handling the infrastructure needs. So, two different things.
I'm not saying anything about the roles being combined. If that was what it sounded like, that was not my.
It's just two different things.
What I'm saying is, when you and I met three years ago in August after the election, we sat down and said, and you said, here's what I think we need.
Yes.
And I said, okay, how do we pay for it? And you said, we're losing the superintendent's salary, that money can be reallocated to cover this salary, which we will now be creating. That's all I would say.
I can tell you, we've met a lot of times, and I think you've forgotten a lot of things that I've gone over, believe me.
I tried.
But, you know, the, the full-time superintendent, I mean, the, the city administrator, most cities this size have this. And the fact that it is, has been funded since two thousand one, I mean, I think, I mean, the citizens can agree, defunding that position for a new person coming in, I don't even care. I've been able to do it and do it successfully. I'm just saying that it does take up about sixty hours of my week because it's very hard to do, and, and more than a full-time city administrator and be a full-time mayor. I mean, things just don't, you can't get it out.
And trust me, I'm not offering an opinion in what I'm saying about whether we need one or not. I frankly think we do.
So does Auburn.
But I was just talking about the funding of it, which was the topic of the current conversation.
When you cut expenses as much as I have, you're able to invest in the things that the city needs. Cause we can look at expenses all day long, but it's, we're still able, we've been meeting our goals every single year. The deficit that shows right now, I think it's in excess of seven hundred thousand dollars, is because of a million dollar transfer.
We're not cutting expenses.
No, no, expenses have gone up, revenue's gone up.
Right, but you said you've been cutting expenses.
No, no, but you have to understand that there are expenses being cut when you look at what the, the budget would look like if we never changed anything. And that's what I tried to explain to you. When you look at this reporting, the city surplus, if we never changed anything, and we kept stealing money from utilities, the utility surplus in two thousand seventeen would have been two point one million. Actually, in two thousand seventeen, because we corrected it, was five, four point five million. The city surplus would have been four point eight million if we didn't change. So, there's no way that we could go from almost a six million dollar deficit to four million, four point eight million if you're just doing apples to apples. So, we have invested more money in areas that we needed to by cutting a lot of unnecessary expenses. I mean, there's no question. That's why we budgeted every single year, and we've finally become a self-sustaining city. There's no way that this can be turned into something. It's not. It's extraordinary.
Jimmy, to give you another, the twenty-twenty budget over twenty-nineteen budget has an eight percent increase in expenditures, and if you take the twenty-twenty budget over actuals, it says almost eight, seventeen point eight percent increase over actuals.
The bottom line, we exceeded goal. And we've been doing that year after year.
So, that's, I think that's your, that's what you have to look at, see where that money's going for, for things that if we wanna do.
I've shown this budget to people who are actually in finance, and they are, they're the ones that can see the big, big difference. And I think go find somebody that is in finance to explain this to you better so you can trust it. But it's a significant improvement. There's no fudging of numbers. It is way better than I thought we could ever do. But, you know, actual, and it's, it's, we're on a very, very good trend for the future. And like I said, after, you know, utility infrastructure is done, I mean, the city and utilities are gonna be in a position where there's gonna be so much opportunity. But we do have to be very frugal for the next five years, and I don't mean frugal as in don't hire people. We have critical needs right now. And ever since we, we fully staffed our facility maintenance, that was once one hard-working individual, to six people, I mean, we're doing improvements right now that have, had we contracted out, it would be significantly higher. And Lance and I are gonna be going over facilities during this budget.
Does anybody have any other questions about revenues right now?
I just think we need to be careful as we go through these other departments, looking at, you know, expenses, and they might look good by themselves, but collectively, when we get to the end.
I just think you need to look at the last three years and what we've been able to accomplish, and have a little faith that we know what we're doing to. So, I mean, this, things like this never happen. The improvement we've made in, in three years, this kind of stuff never happens. And it's because a lot of time and care goes into every single thought. Yes, there's things that are gonna be cut, but you can go back as far as you can in financial history of Fairhope, and nothing like this has ever happened.
I think that the utility revenues, the utility reserves grew, that the general fund debt was decreased twenty million dollars of. I, I, you'd say you'd take offense to something, I take offense to the fact that you keep saying that we operated a six million dollar deficit when you just.
It's absolutely true.
Expenses, and, you know, like, we just saw, the admin cost alone has gone up by a million, so that's another million that's going back to general government from utilities. Not arguing with the way the accounting's done, that's fine. I, I don't disagree with that at all, but it's just like, it goes back to what Jimmy said. You look at the combined revenue, utility and city, and look at the combined expenses, and, you know, there was, there was just never a six million dollar deficit. You can't have a six million dollar deficit payoff.
You can deny this all you want, honestly. You can deny it all you want, but it is absolutely the truth.
We didn't pay off any debt. We didn't pay off twenty million dollars worth of debt. It's still there. I mean.
The debt was paid off.
Rainy day fund that was built up, and we had two million dollars.
I'm not saying anything about the past, I'm saying that we became self-sufficient, which means we didn't, we're not using three million dollars of operating account and three million dollars in transfers.
What department would you like to discuss next?
Unbelievable. You are the ones that wanted, you said revenue and what was, what was the other one?
Economics.
I do, I do have in the budget a scheme for a person, and that is in that number that you're looking at.
What?
An additional employee. As I've been here just a few months, trying to get a handle on things that are not being done. An additional employee. As I've been here just a few months trying to get a handle on things that are not being done, in the budget, I am asking for an AP specialist, an additional AP specialist, to try to improve the process of paying the bills. I've come in and tried finding a lot of, you know, efficiencies, but there's just not enough staff. And the problem I'm running into is I have staff that's not taking lunch, working over, has built up comp time, as much comp time, and, you know, without having to pay overtime, we're, things have to be pushed aside and not, you know, not being processed. And that's what, you know, coming in, I was told, "Hey, the bills don't get paid on time." Well, I can see why. I mean, it's just, it's staff. And so, I do have in that budget $40,000 of that number you're looking at was to increase a...
That's in the administrative, you talked about?
That's in that administrative line item, so...
Should we go through the admin expenses then before we jump to...
And I have two as well. Since I've been here for 13 years, there's three people in my department. I've seen, you know, different departments change, and now it's, now it's time for mine to grow just a little bit. But I respectfully request at least one of those, so...
Well, and without, I don't see a breakdown of it right here. If y'all want to go all the way into that. I don't know that we had planned on going into that right now.
Just for help, helpful, just for helpful, if any of y'all have that, that could be a homework.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't review that yet, because I wasn't prepared to get into that yet.
Right.
So...
You found it.
You got the economic and community development there.
We can, can we just do it for MUNIS?
You want to do economic and community development?
Yeah.
So, in MUNIS, you go to Vance, and then in the org, type in 001240.
Thanks, Kelly. 001240?
Yes.
Page eight in there if you want to look at the paper. Y'all see that on page eight?
Everybody? Oh, page eight, that's just all the...
Same stuff.
All right. Ms. Walker?
Hello. So disappointed we weren't part of last week's budget discussion, but thanks for having us today. So, we're going to start with economic and community development, I guess. What kind of questions do you have for me?
You know, there was only one question that I had on that entire sheet, and I think I know the answer, but I'm going to let you answer it anyway, because your expenditures went down. We like down, we like that. You were very conservative in your revenue.
Well, you know, better to be conservative than not.
You don't see the number, it's zero.
Good sec.
The community events, the number that went from 143 to 382, 565, is that lights?
It's lights, absolutely.
And those were the lights that we already voted to fund, right?
Correct.
We're not going to have to talk about Christmas lights again this year, right?
Please, let's not talk about Christmas lights again. But if you want to, we can. That'd be fine.
Okay, so that is just on the economic and community development portion of it.
Right, and there's one thing that is missing from this. We went back through and we've, we looked at the budget last week. We are going to request another position, you know, looking, I know, I think most of you have been through the office and seen what we've got going on and how many things are up for the next year. So, we're going to be requesting another position to help Paige with community events, but also to help with economic and community development to kind of keep things between the lines, so...
So, how was, how was the, how did it go down to begin with? How did the salary line go down by $21,000?
Because you hired me.
There you go.
But I mean, if you want to negotiate.
I'm already at call savings.
Yeah, the proposal was for an additional person, and then there would be a net increase, but it wouldn't have been that much.
But we definitely see value in another position in our department. I mean, you look at that list of community events, and Paige does most of that by herself, because there's only two people in our department. So, we could really use the extra help making that happen.
Did we add any position last year?
We did not. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, if I'm not speaking out of turn, I think that it's been asked for every year, but it has not been, it's just been denied every year.
The other, on the other line that I see needs some work, I think, is the charitable contributions line.
I think we left, Kim, you may have to help me, but I think we left 50 in there for Baldwin County and put the $300,000 in the debt, impact fees, I'm sorry, yeah. Well, it's actually going out as debt service, but, but impact fees can pay for it, so...
So, on the amount that we haven't paid yearly to the school board, that's switched over to a note. So, we have $1.5 million as a note. It's not really charitable contributions anymore, because that was part of the K1 purchase, unless, unless there's somewhere that was supposed to be an additional to the $350,000. I understood the $300,000 was to go to pay towards the debt. We have to record it that way.
The debt, the $2.5 million is paid separately from the $300,000 to $300,000. It's not 350. But we might pay 350, but the agreement is to pay 350 for five years, the $1.5 million. But that's not technically a debt payment.
But you got to record it that way. It has to be recorded as the asset of the 4 million.
And something that we looked at too was the fact that, you know, acquiring the land for the next center and the park across the street, that can be impact fees. So, we did put, I think, 350.
I was being creative, because we bought a park as part of that, and to be able to use $300,000 of that payment can be kind of impact fees.
Okay, well, yeah, I noticed it was a lot less, but...
It's not going to be a charitable contribution anymore because of the way you have to accounting wise. We have to report that asset at the K1 center and then report that, that debt.
So, there are... And then on those charitable contributions, I just want to caution that there's a lot of, I see several new ones and some of these have gone up, and they just, they come in and, I remember Mike Ford saying, "They creep in, they never go away."
Well, and one that's missing that we did receive then after we had kind of locked the budget down was the Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance. So, we did get that $15,000 request in.
I had it in then. So, that first one on the list, Robert and I sat down and looked at this. We struck that again. That's a new one.
What was that?
Child advocacy.
We kept the...
You struck it as in...
Zeroed it out like it's always been. I mean, if we, if we fund every single charity that comes to us, we would, we would have no money. We, this is what we suggested. Then we, the walking school bus, we kept that level.
You had five.
Down to five.
Yep. And these were just our suggestions.
Now, they did add a second location. So, now they're servicing not only the elementary school, but they're also having walking school buses and intermediate schools this year.
What's the cost of that? Do you know?
I don't know the cost, but I just know they have a second location that they're servicing.
Make a suggestion. Make a suggestion, man. The Baldwin Pops, we agreed to that last year. We kind of added that mid-year, right? So, was that all cash or was some of that in-kind?
That was all cash. Our in-kind services are separate from that.
We left the downtown business level. We left the art center level. We didn't go up on that. The Optimus Club thing, that's, that's an in-kind donation only. I don't know why the number went up, $1,458, but it's just a, it's always been in-kind, right? The...
When you back up to Chamber, did you leave Chamber in Chamber of Commerce?
We left that the same. We pretty much left everything the same. So, the Ecuminal, we left level. And then that Education Advisory Committee was, we just discussed. We left the family promise level.
Well, it's a zero, right, too. The family promise.
Oh, wait.
You film?
Yeah, family promise, we put zero.
Okay. And then the Film Festival, you back down to eight?
Yes.
She included in it, I think we put it in the packet, the impact of that event she had studied.
You know, when we gave them some seed money initially, they, you know, seven or eight years ago, the thought was that they just needed it for a few years, and it's just becoming an additional line item for us every year. Back two, three years ago, we cut it to eight. I mean, if we, if we give back every single dime that we have in economic impact, then the citizens don't see a benefit. So, I mean, at what point can we step away and let them, you know, go, "We're not cutting them"? And it's just, we chose to leave it level.
As we become more physically healthy though, I do think investing in community development is important. And it is economic development.
Family promises, you know, that's, that's something they haven't asked for anything for. And I understand that I'm on board with that. If you bring them on, you can struggle with it sometimes. Definitely, but some of them provide services that do benefit.
Absolutely. It benefits our citizens. But the Film Festival is economically beneficial, and they did go through the trouble of getting that study, and I thought that was pretty impressive. So...
Yeah, and like I said before, I mean, something, it's like our parks, for example, they're not, there's no economic return there, but they are, you know, accessories for our community to be able to use and enjoy as part of kind of what our community is. You can't necessarily put in monetary number on everything, every service we provide doesn't always have an economic return.
So, are you suggesting a change on something there?
No.
Yeah, I mean, hey, you know, it doesn't, doesn't make me feel good to say zero on family promise. I give to them personally every year. But, and I get that feedback from a lot of citizens. We feel like it's incumbent upon the citizens to give, not the city to give our tax money away on a lot of these. It's a tough decision to make. We all want to be charitable, but when we're talking taxpayer money, we pick and choose the charities that we're giving to. There's a lot of people that have heartache with that. There's a lot of people that have heartache with us giving anything to any charity. National S U A program, why did that go up by $10,000?
Well, I know that we're about to embark on the Weeks Bay watershed, I'm not Weeks Bay, I'm sorry. We're about to embark on the Fly Creek watershed plan with them, the watershed management plan with them. We're within the, like, the very beginning stages of that.
Is that a charitable contribution?
It is a charitable contribution.
I think it's more of a partnership, but I don't think there's, it's a contract.
No, it's definitely not a contract. It is a charitable contribution, but I'll say that, you know, they're working, they'll be working hard with us here. I do see the value in investing in that, because they've, they've got big plans. I mean, they've already started small work here in the community. We've got them hopefully coming to Environmental Advisory Board on Friday to talk about how we can get more engaged with that watershed management, even before they start their work.
Councilman talked on that, and, you know, that, that's almost, it's not necessarily a charitable contribution. You're almost paying for work, and that's why I asked you if it was a contract.
It's not a contract, but the work that they're doing is really completing the whole watershed in the state. It's ending with Fly Creek, and this is one of our most important watersheds, so it's really...
He mentioned other municipalities that upped their funding when they did watershed studies for water areas of the community, yeah.
Absolutely.
Do you see this as something that would be recurring, or maybe this year goes up and maybe the next year it goes down?
I'll have to find out how long it takes, but the whole, the whole thing was at 10 years for the whole state.
Sure. I'd say for the duration that they'll be in the Fly Creek area, we, I would expect to, for them to ask for a larger amount like this. I do know, and I agree with Robert and Jimmy, in that they were, they, other municipalities that they've worked with on their watershed management plans have upped those contributions to them during their, their time of work there.
I don't have a problem with it, really. I needed an explanation for that. Anybody else? Anybody else have a strong feeling on where they ought to come in?
I think it's just while they're, while they're working on Fly Creek.
The golf, I noticed the fif, there's a zero in there, but that's, that's always been an in-kind donation of the use of the golf course. I wrote that back in as an in-kind. I don't know why that was taken out. The Pirate Booster Club, you know, that's something that comes back to us every year. I see that, that's gone up, but, you know, we paid, I think, $50,000 a year, I'm sorry, $35,000 a year for several years paying off the field house. And we finally got that paid off last year, and we lowered that, and I see that creeping, creeping back up. I'd be in favor of level, and I'm a booster. I'd be in favor of keeping that level, not going up on that. Well, we're looking at an employee back here who's the president of Booster Club, which also doesn't sit well if we're going to start that, so I don't, I don't think because an employee is the president that we should boost it by 50%.
I don't think he put that in.
Well, I might look back at it.
Well, I know that he's president. He does a great job.
We do it based on the letters that they send to the city.
Yeah, they do send, we require them to send letters.
We're not required to give them what they ask for. They're going to shoot high. I recommend keeping it level.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fine to keep it level, and if there is a specific need that arises that maybe we can help with, if we're able, then that's probably a better way to approach that.
And I'll just speak to it, just so you know, this, the request was specifically, we got a request from one of the sports for some significant facility upgrades at one location, and that is what it was tasked for, was for one specific project.
Then in that case, you know, bring it forward as a, as a, improvement on our facilities, not a Booster Club donation. All right. Youth club, level, same, that's what's recommended. And we finally got the Thomas Hospital pledge paid off. They'll be back. That's true. They will. United Way, and that's another one of those that most companies and most cities, you know, get their employees, encourage their employees to donate. It's not very much on that request, but it's just one of those. I don't know why, why I added as another. I, I wasn't in favor of that. I'm real popular when I cut these charities out, I'm sure. What did y'all think about that? I mean, if you do that, you might as well just add every charity in Baldwin County. Those are my recommendations. Anybody have any? And a lot of these were Robert's.
You know, I, I'm sitting here thinking of what I said about twenty minutes ago, and I'm, I'm thinking I might have been wrong. You know, as far as these charities are concerned, 'cause I'm, something you said that, that's right. I mean, we are, a charitable contribution should be something the individual decides to give, and, and we are sitting here making these decisions for other people's money. And so in that regard, maybe, as it pertains to this at least, there should be some economic return to the city.
I think you allocate what you wanna allocate, and then almost make it citizen engaged, you know what I mean? Like, what do you want?
Yeah, but me even being my own devil's advocate, you can, you can make the argument that all, every, every donation made improves your quality of life, which improves your, you know, property values or what, health and welfare of the city. You could, you could tie it into every one of them, and you could tie it into every charity that exists, because they're doing good. So where do you, where do you stop? And, uh, I really have had people that, and you'd be surprised, I mean, these are charitable people that have...
They just wanna make room for themselves.
They don't think that it, that you should use city money for that, so. It pains me. All right, uh, the community events. I'll check, uh, look that over real quick. The tree lighting, once again, on that number was for the lights.
This included. And this is you. I mean, in 2020.
If that's in the community events, and then you go back to the line item.
It's there.
Oh, the community, okay, that's it. Well, that's the song, it's back there. Okay, yeah, 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 I'm with you now. I was about to double up on that. Okay.
Blue light lights.
Have you got good notes, do you?
I got everything you talked about on the chair.
Okay. I got one question on the events, and this is not even related to the dollar amount, but the, um, Christmas parade. Maybe that Saturday. S C championship game.
Yes, but we also want to think about...
Decisions made by all the fans.
Um, what we wanna think about though is that First Friday Art Walk is an enormous impact on our downtown merchants. And if we can get visitors to come for two days instead of one, because really First Friday Art Walk doesn't happen, um, I, I think it's something that we should look into, and the sole purpose is to, um, increase tourism, and there's always gonna be something going on, you know? But I tape my show because it seems, seems like I never am able to watch it live. But, you know, I, I think that it's one of those things, we really want to benefit downtown merchants, and with sales tax, it is up, but the fact that it is slowing, you know, we just wanna try to think of ways to do better.
Basically adding an event a night, right? Just another night to be, to, people would be out.
Right.
I mean, I, I did, I'm trying to think, I have had a phone call or two. I, I'd like to, to, for the council to have been aware of that, since we are the ones that authorized the streets to be closed for these parades, and I don't think that we were given that opportunity. And I had a few people, does anybody know who may have? There was somebody that called, and it, it was some big conflict. Not, not football game conflict, that was, uh...
Didn't see Daphne.
Uh, does City of Daphne still have their parade on the same night?
They are having theirs on the same night.
And they do theirs, do, we all have our parade.
Right, and, and so you've got, you know, some organizations that parade in both, and the people that are going to watch that float, those kids on it are not gonna show up, maybe in one or the other. I don't know.
I think it's just strictly economic impact, and, and that's, those are the things, I think, that if we can get people to come for the weekend, we'll increase lodging tax, lodging tax sales, and hopefully keep them here for the whole weekend, and...
Since Art Walk, taking resources, couldn't you just move Art Walk to Saturday night, maybe parade on Friday night?
Well, I mean, I think they've tried to do that before. Well, it's Friday, I mean, it's First Friday Art Walk, I mean, you know...
Is that a...
Yeah, if there's a conflict in the neighboring community.
Uh, yeah, that, that's, that's a little bothersome. They're on the same night as Daphne. I can think of people that, that do participate in both. Some, some groups have been participating in our parade a long time, and they participate in that.
Would that affect, I mean, I don't charge anybody to be in our parade.
There's no charge, but we do only allow, you know, Fairhope, Point Clear, Barnwell Montrose, because we have such a limited amount of floats we can have, 'cause we have wrapped around on ourselves a couple times, so...
Every year.
Yeah. So we do limit it to that, but there's no cost to this.
And I just think that people will come out for both, and it's something that, um, we'd like to have twelve First Friday events for downtown merchants who have spent an unbelievable amount of years making it what it is today, so.
So you're for it.
I don't, I mean, I don't think a lot of people stay open for parades, though.
Have we ever done it on a Saturday?
I think they have.
We, we did, we did once, I know, because...
It was before my time.
I had to come to it, 'cause Alex was working it, so I do remember. And luckily, what now?
I didn't notice it was on Saturday.
Bless. I'm gonna play South Carolina, I think, in the championship game.
We can have the football game going.
I didn't care about watching.
Nah, the game's at...
And a big, big screen.
It's at two-thirty.
I think the game's at two-thirty, yeah.
Yes, so that shouldn't be...
Yeah, that was not the, the big game anymore. Yeah, there's some people go to the game, but that's few and far between. That's not so much it.
Does Daphne have any restrictions on who can enter their parade?
No, that I don't know.
I'm just trying to think about the overlap, people that might wanna do both, and, and how that limits their opportunity.
They may.
'Cause if we only allow Fairhope, Point Clear, and that...
But they have two events in Fairhope.
I mean, I think that's great. I'm just trying to think about the people that want, I'm now thinking about the, the entrance of the parade, who wanna try to do both, and...
Think of the poor people that are trying to get to Fairhope and get through Daphne to get into the parade.
I don't know that I'm upset about smaller than that.
They may not make it. Anyway.
We might be able to go a little bit faster.
We need to think about that.
You ready to find out how many people do enter both parades? How many floats did we have last year, Paige?
Sixty-ish, around sixty normally, with emergency vehicles and all that. I mean, it's a lot. And it, they stretch pretty far. Now, we'll need, I mean, we, we're sending out applications October first, so...
You did have to firm...
Yeah, which, I mean, we, I think some permissions have, yeah, some permissions have gone out.
Say twenty percent of the participants do both parades, and they're gonna do a float for just one parade, you know, in the past years they've been able to decorate it around...
I think it depends on if they're Fairhope bound, too.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's really, I'm just trying to think about Fairhope right now, and the impact it'll have on, the economic impact on Fairhope. And I do think if we give this a chance and try to build it into a weekend event, it will definitely pay a lot of dividends, long-term. 'Cause we really want people to stay for the weekend.
That's a tough one. I'm still struggling a little bit with the conflict with Daphne being good neighbors. And, and them, I'm sure having theirs on Saturday, knowing that ours is almost always on Friday.
It's natural for them to switch to Friday, then.
I'm sorry, I did it. Well, I did it.
Sorry. I said it's natural for them to switch to Friday, then. We've been trying to do this for three years, and every year, it's like, oh, but what about this?
Did anybody...
And what about that?
Thinking about moving it to Saturday?
Every, beginning of every year, in January.
They have had theirs as a day parade. I believe this is the first time they've switched it to a night parade. So they've normally been a Saturday parade, but it's more in the, in the daytime.
How does Santa Claus do it?
Yeah, we don't need to give that secret away.
It's magic. It's Christmas magic.
Christmas magic.
All right, any other questions on the community, economic community development, charitable contributions, community events? I think we're done with that one.
Did we already go through, already went through all the departments?
No.
Okay.
That's just one.
Okay.
So Civic, you wanna do Civic?
Yes.
So, uh...
Michael.
Well, who's Civic?
Maybe not.
Well, hold on. You wanna go through Civic's side?
Let's do Civic next.
I'm gonna turn it off. Everybody look home, but I didn't catch it in time.
So, in Munis, our Munis guys. Zero, zero, one, two, sixty. And Michael has gone back and attached some documentation. What line items were those, Michael, mainly the capital improvements and stuff?
It was, and also I added, um, some pictures, not that we have to look through them all, but for infrastructure issues we're having. It's under, um, capital.
Capital improvements, okay. You can talk about, if you wanna start with rent, you can explain that out.
On the revenues for rent, gentlemen, the, uh, the projected amount was actually lower than what we estimated it to be. If you remember back in two thousand eighteen of April, we did revise the fee schedule, and during that time, um, April is right before our slow season, when, when school gets out. We have nine months that we're actually busy ninety percent of the time. When school's out, we're, we're catching up with everything and maintenance. So during that time, that's why those figures aren't gonna be as much as was, as was expected. Also, we had three major cancellations. We had two antique shows that canceled. We had, uh, one family reunion that canceled, and we also had a bar canceled their event. So that brought it down to about twelve-five, twelve thousand five hundred dollars on that expected rental revenue. Um, another point, not that it's an issue, but, um, we do have an increase in nonprofit institutions that have, you know, shown proof of that. So three of those organizations are Mardi Gras organizations that will start in two thousand twenty. Uh, right now, one of them claimed nonprofit for two thousand nineteen, so that was a little bit of unexpected loss of revenue. Actually, a lot for Mardi Gras. Out of our annual events that we hold every year, pretty much on a regular basis, we have seventy-six annual events. Forty-two of those events are exempted, basically a nonprofit or a fee waiver. So twenty-two out of those event exemptions are nonprofits, and about twenty of them are fee waivers, meaning schools, city-sponsored events, city, city events that take up time during our, our annual eventless, things of that nature. So basically, around fifty-five percent of the rental fees are reduced or waived, not that that's affecting what I just told you about our bottom line on the revenue. So any questions about? I did request, uh, this is actually the third year we've requested a, um, uh, facilities coordinator for our department. Right now, we currently have two full-time staff, uh, split between all our events annually. Sometimes these events go from three days to seven days, six, seven days, and it, it does get hard to fill that gap when you have two people working eighty hours a week because of all the events from seven AM to ten PM or whatever, um, for off time. Our facility, I don't, a lot of people may know this a lot, may not, but we have base, the, the first time was last year that we actually retained a custodian to do our custodian duties. The city's always used, or this facility has always used Department of Corrections or, um, work release inmates through the state or from next door. And that is seized at both locations, um, so now it's, it's on us to, to cover these duties. On the request, you'll also see that we asked for a full ti- uh, excuse me, a part-time position for the custodial. It was full-time. I asked for full-time, I requested that, and the mayor wanted it to go to part-time.
We don't have any full-time custodians.
So on your salaries, um, that one sixty-one, five-eighty-five is now one hundred fifty-nine thousand. Your payroll taxes are twelve thousand, one sixty-three, and your retirement's ten thousand, five thirty.
And I also recommended that for events, that they should just pay the actual fee to clean. Sometimes it can be done in-house, but sometimes you get a cleaning service to come in, and...
Correct. We did have to do that last year because we did lose one of our, um, custodial staff. But the point I wanna make is, um, everyday cleaning has to be done regardless of what happens here. The bathrooms have to be cleaned, everything has to be cleaned for the public and staff and personnel. We did have to hire that, outsource that custodial duty during that time, um, so that took a cut in our budget as well. Um, another thing is, is this in-house service that we used in the past, not that we have to use them every time, but they would come in and do these services in four hours, and basically charge us what we are charging the renter for cleaning fees at fifty an hour. Comes out to about, I think it was one eighty-eight, one ninety, one eighty-eight, one ninety-nine, for four people to come in for four hours and do the cleaning. Um, so it just kinda shows you how to compare it. That is something that we, we don't have right now, so right now, we just have a custodial part-time that's doing these duties. When it gets busy starting this month, next month, it's gonna be impossible for that person to keep up with the, with the, um, the task at hand.
What's the hundred ninety thousand capital improvement?
Um, that is a whole list of...
Go into the detail, too.
I can't read this one.
The, the maintenance annually is increasing. We're not doing it all, but I do think we do need to discuss a future facility, 'cause this is, we've outgrown it, and anyway, I think having a venue that is something the City of Fairhope could be proud of, and something that is really, really nice, should be a goal.
So what's the hundred ninety?
I mean, that's just mentioning that these are little Band-Aids.
Well, I'm still on that, um, I'm still on that economic community, community develop, what is the number for this?
Zero, this is...
It's a different number, isn't it?
Yes, zero, zero, one, two, sixty.
Forty-five thousand for E C T floor tile.
That's the auditorium in the lobby tile. That's, uh, still the original.
Store, and, and dressing rooms. It's just minor renovations. But it's just been added, did this one two-twenty-five, and you said nothing more than eighty, so what I'm looking at is probably that's what it's already paid.
Um, no, I was talking about the, what I called out earlier?
Well, the capital improvements or one ninety, right?
Right, they are.
Where the minus two-twenty-five, I'm assuming some of these are not.
Yes, we probably got, um...
Wouldn't theirs update, though?
There was one on there. It should have been, actually, it was for the stage. It should have been seventy.
Oh, okay.
Because that was not repaired, and that's one of the most critical, critical items.
So that number's two-twenty-five?
Two hundred.
Two hundred?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't think anybody up here with any sanity would argue that we need, you know, a lot of aesthetics and improvements on this. You know, it just, it jumps out. It, it skews your budget. It makes your, your expenditures go up about forty-five percent in a, in a single year.
Yes, sir. And, and that's why I attached the pictures. And that's why I attached the pictures.
And that's what makes it really hard when we go through these piece by piece, it just seems real small in the grand scheme of things, but then when you get to the end and everything adds up to 23 million dollars over what it was, you know, some other time.
And I think the pictures will explain themselves. They're not, they're very...
Hold on a second.
Places that you don't normally see in the facility that are degrading and need attention.
And it's not that I'm against these improvements, I'm just, I'm tired of throwing away money in a facility that I think Fairhope deserves better.
Well, I don't think, neither do you, either, but where do you, at what point do you, you know, we have so many needs, I mean...
That's what I'm saying, is prioritizing those needs and I think with something like this, you would get, it would be an investment in getting, I think, more rentals.
One of those items that is really safety critical is the stage. It's becoming a safety issue.
I mean, you know, if I was just to come in here and just look at everything at a 50,000-foot level and say, you just increase your budget by 45% from year over year and say, you know, make that reasonable, but not only, here's the other thing, I don't want to pick on you because we hadn't done that with everybody else that walked up here and said, well, you need to cut that by 25% or you need to cut that by 30%.
Lance is here and I think he could actually speak to some of these capital improvements.
Somewhere, sooner or later, something.
45-year-old AG system.
That's in the council, right here, the one that's still cooling you because there's nothing...
I thought we put new air...
Yes, sir, on the in-autorium.
I thought we did it here. We put down on the budget, I guess we...
We have to do the budget, we've never done.
But did we approve it?
No, so we never brought it to council. It's on my radar. One thing to keep in mind about this building and all it made of...
Want to come up here?
The roof.
And that's also...
And that's what it's going to be. It's going to be tough to decide.
We need to talk about the future.
It's getting to where they can't, you know, you're patching more than your, you're leaking more than you're patching, so...
Counsel, you don't think it'll...
You know, I trust that all these things need to be done, but, you know, is there any way to kind of prioritize, looking at this and looking at the stages, because definitely priority, safety issues, that's kind of...
We took out the fire update, too, as well, just to kind of balance this out, and I was very frugal with this, as best I could be and prioritize it, you know. It is a lot, but we are an old building, what, 1960, I think?
It's a process that...
Anybody else have any comments?
Well, you know, talking about the budget being 45% higher, if you, let's assume year after year, if we haven't done anything for the following year, if we didn't do anything this year, he's actually cut his budget.
And it's 45% a smaller number, too. It's a smaller number.
Set on higher, one or the other. So, you know, I'm not, I understand the fact that the budget, you know, his percentage's gone up, I mean, it's more, not so much as his budget and his expenditures, he's got to fix the building.
If we don't have the plans already drawn and ready to go, then we kind of have to Band-Aid it until we get to that point. But at some point, we're going to make that decision, are we going to fix it, plan and put that time into it, or are we going to plan to vacate in the future? And that roof is going to be the time when that decision probably will have to be made. You think about the whole roof I'm talking about from USA on, USA is a little bit of shape, then this end, if you consider the center this way. You know, it's a... Yeah, it would be hard to spend the money to repair that roof. Gypsum roof with a roll roof.
And that's assuming that we want a main due with the roof restored.
And we have to remember, too, a lot of these events are forecasted five years out, so it's going to be a critical timeline, too, about how that's approached if and when it happens.
Well, unfortunately, that's the case, no matter when we...
Yes, sir, correct.
All right, counsel, you want to leave it in there? Well, like I said, I said at last budget meeting, and I'll say it again this one, is that I put it in the budget, you always have another bite at the apple, you know, it does, it still has to come back, you know, that AC purchase has to come back, that, you know, tile has to come back, all those things have to come back, but I'm just a little bit concerned with getting through this whole process and not having trimmed anything and have some things that aren't in here show up, that something had to have been cut somewhere. You know, we literally could take an overall view of this budget and we take a lot more time than, we could look at the number, we could look at one number and say, y'all go back and cut 10%, or y'all go back and cut 5% across the board, every single department. We try not to do that, probably look at everything, but I don't want to look through this whole thing in three weeks and then have to come back and say, you know, we're not there yet because we didn't cut anything.
So, you always have to cut something?
No, not necessarily. I just said I don't want to, I don't want to get to the end and then say, well, we got this that we want, but we didn't see it, now we want it, and so it means we got to adjust everything and then to go out and pull out what you need is really, really hard.
I want to tell you that the University of South Alabama's lease is up, may have, is it 20 or 21?
21.
Because it says end date May 2019, but I know they have another year after that.
It was from the day of occupancy.
Okay. So, I mean, that's just something to think about in our planning.
All right, counsel, I'm not hearing any, anything to change?
Well, I mean, I'm looking at some of the stuff that, I mean, when I see something that's a serious safety issue, I don't know how you cut that. Well, you can, but then if somebody injures themselves and somebody didn't know about it, you didn't do anything about it, and that's...
And that's why I attached all the pictures so you could look at it yourselves.
And I just can't get into the pictures, it just will not let me open them.
It says it took it, but it's not...
Well, it's showing count one, but, and it's taking me to a link, but it won't let me open it.
Well, we're going to have to... I'm trying to get through this one section and we're going to have to wrap it up in about four, five minutes because we started our council meeting 10 minutes late last time. We have a big meeting around, I don't want to start late.
Okay.
But I'm not, if I'm not hearing anything from the council, let's go ahead and move on beyond the Civic Center.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. And move into the museum welcome center real quick. You can do that.
Okay, in Munis, it's 001270.
If you look at expenditures on this department, counsel, you'll see it's a, you know, it's a low number, but then you go back to the, to the percentage, it's about 9%.
The increase in salaries is due to the new position Alan is requesting and then there's some one-time archival shelving in that general supplies is why it's increasing. It's about $6,000, but Alan can explain that more if y'all would like him to.
Yeah, but your salaries are increased over budget by a little less than $11,000, about, what, 10,000, 1,400, so is that accurate? How does that include a new position?
The position is a part-time at the welcome center because currently that is volunteer-staffed only.
Right.
And this would be basically a point person for all volunteers to coordinate.
Exactly, to help people, make sure we have people there, especially at key times. And they would also be, they were doing, volunteering, you know, coordinating at the welcome center, so they'd be, you know, also doing, they'd be ambassadors as well.
Yeah, the new position's a little less than 14,000, so if you add that to the projected actuals, it's right at...
Better scratch in about 300,000 for capital improvements.
Is that for the, I know that I wrote down over here in capital projects that we were going to add the baseline project for the welcome center, is that what you're referring to, Robert? Okay. But the baseline was only 22, it's not in here, I have a note that we need to add that.
I believe it was around 200, if I'm not mistaken.
200, is that baseline? Because I wrote down a 165.
That's an architect baseline, it's going to be 300.
It's going to be 200.
Any others, any other comments on that? We have time, about two minutes, maybe to go through the next center?
Yes. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Yeah, in a pre-meeting, we went ahead and cut these capital improvements, $20,000 down to three. There was some ceiling tiles and those were cut. And then this dance expense was reduced from 12,000 to 8,500.
What's that net income, what's that net loss now, there?
The net loss, let me go back and look at my... The net loss is 371,626. 626.
Well, the, one of the things, too, we've been, we're trying to invest in different facilities and since the next center has had some investments in capital improvements, we're going to hold off on the carpet because there's just so many needs right now in all the facilities. That's under the capital improvement. Actually, it's just, it's 20,000 of the 23.
Right.
I think the most critical thing from a structure point of view at the next center is the roof. We're leaking constantly, it's 23-year-old roof, I'm always having somebody out to fix this, fix that, and so that was, that was the big, the big item that I was really hoping for this year, and I'm not sure if it landed because I don't see it on the...
I don't, I don't ever see it in that.
Well, it was in the 65, the 65,000 and for the roof, that wasn't on the budget.
That, I believe I moved that to the capital projects fund.
Oh, right, capital projects.
Okay, so I wouldn't, it wouldn't show up on my specific budget, okay.
That's over on page 22. Well, I say it is.
What difference it is, what goes on their budget versus the capital projects where, say, the Civic Center has the capital projects in the budget?
Mainly the amount, the dollar amount, but now since I said that, I'm not seeing it.
Counsel, it's a, it's a, it shows a less loss, it's an amenity, you know, this is something tax...
Yeah, I'm not seeing it.
So, yeah, you, you know, we have a loss on this line item, just to let you know that is an 11.4% over 2019 budget increase. And so, once again, they just creep, they're just creeping in, it's 8, 9, 10, 11% at a time.
Yeah, but...
With revenue projections, at about five?
The roof's not, not in there, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I guess it was decided not to do.
Okay, then.
Counsel, we're going to have to adjourn, so we can get your council meeting started, but we'll pick up right there.